I know. It's all right. All right.
Let's all be in order, please rise for the lead. The lead is the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Courtney is graciously accepted the offer to.
Oh, that's nice. Only because I have to say my name first.
Rule call on the board.
Anne Marie Anderson, Eric Bryan.
Here.
Courtney Knackel, here. Joe Gasky, here. Rock Wright.
Here.
Jeremy Sampolo.
Here.
Debbie Burnett.
She's here.
Here.
There you go.
Brad Ramsey.
I'm sorry.
Ashley McMason, here. And it's Dr.
So not here today. All right. All right, public notice issued at the compliance Wisconsin statute for chapter nineteen eighty-four, posted to elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as the post office and unity bank. Please come up with approval of the agenda, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Rule call whenever you need to, Courtney.
Anderson, Gasky.
Yes.
Knackel, yes. Bryan.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Right. The next meeting dates are January sixteenth, February twentieth, March twentieth, and then the annual meeting is September twenty-fifth at this point, all at six P. M. Anybody have any comments with that? Just let one of us know if that'd be perfect. And we'll move on to student highlights.
We'll let John introduce our student highlights today. We'll kind of go from there.
Yeah, Dr. Joe asked me for someone who's doing some amazing work in the school. And, you know, typically, I don't get to work with the all-stars, the best in the school, because they're not, you know, they're not in my office very often. Adeline, I got an email this past week, and she was working in our launch program, and she just has done such a phenomenal job. We got a nice note from the Marshfield Clinic on some of the work that she did. I remember her talking to me, hey, Mr. Newman, I want to do a bake sale, I want to do this. I'm like, yeah, no problem. I got this all set up, and she knocked it out of the park. I know she's had some helpers along the way, but I asked Adeline to come tonight to share some of the work that she's done, and we're so proud of you. Thank you so much for watching.
Courtney.
Okay, so hi, everyone. My name is Adeline Peters from the Ministry of Education. I'm going to tell you about my fundraiser and my blankets, as I call it. I thought of this idea when Mr. Mathness just gave me a sheet of paper out of nowhere and just said, write those for my days. Like, my days. He, I stopped there for a few minutes, and I wanted to think down, but nothing really interesting until I thought of, like, blankets. And I thought of this because when I was little and I had gone to the hospital, I'm not sure why, I don't remember, but I received a blanket from one of the nurses, and it, like, it made my day, it made my year. It was amazing. It literally touched my heart. And then, sorry. Lost myself. Okay. So then I was like, okay, yeah, that's a good idea. So I went home later that night and told my parents about it, and I was so excited. I told my mom, and she's like, that's a really good idea, but how are you going to get money for that? And money for all those blankets for all those kids. And I thought of, I thought hard of mom, and I thought of a bake sale. A bake sale, because I love baking, and I told my mom, she said that would be amazing. And the next day, we went to the store and got all the supplies, I started baking, and it was a long, long, long process, but it eventually came out really well. I ended up making cake pops, Rice Krispies, cookies, brownies, and muffins. It was a six ingredient list, but everyone seemed to like it a lot. After that, I went on and asked my friends, a few of them are here for mall support, and they said they would help me run the bake sale. And we got up, we got, one of my friends brought a little basket for a tip jar, which ended up making a few cents. But after that, it was, went on for, I think, the bake sale, three days, two and a half, kind of, and we made in total, I think, yes, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, ninety-five cents. And we sold out cake pops on the second day.
They're delicious.
I guess we should.
And after that, I, it was a few days after that, because I couldn't think long and hard about which one, which hospital I wanted to donate all my blankets to, but eventually, my mom's friend, her name's Therese, she works at Marshfield, and I thought, oh, that's a good idea, it'll help my mom, and I know Therese, so it would be a really cool idea. My mom called Therese and asked if we could. She said, of course, as always, and she gave my mom Haley's number, which is, she is an intern at Marshfield, and she was just learning, and spoiler, when I went there, she was super shy, and she was very sweet. But I, eventually, we got to Walmart, got all blankets, we ended up getting sixty-five blankets, which is my new favorite number. And then, my mom has a couple of pictures of a nice big cart full of overflowing blankets in the checkout line. Took us about ten minutes to go through all those blankets, and we ended up spending two hundred dollars, and the other sixty-five went to my mom for buying all the bake sales. And then, I, it was a few weeks later when we donated them, but I remember on the car ride there, it was so nervous, because I didn't know anyone there, I didn't know who the blankets were going to go to, I didn't know if they were going to like them or not. But I ended up getting there, and it was just amazing, because Haley guided me through the hallways, and I could just feel the love coming from the hallways, it was so amazing. And I remember going into that back storage room, and I untied the ribbons, my blankets that I tied on them, and I had a little tag for each one that I signed in my very sloppy handwriting. But, and they were in garbage bags, and we took pictures, and I was blushing more than any time I've blushed before in my life. It was so amazing. And after we got back in the car, I told my mom, I just feel amazing. That was like the best thing I've ever done in my life. And then we drove home, I slept the best sleep I've ever slept that night. It was amazing, no more stress about anything. And thank you all for listening. Hope you enjoy.
Thank you. You need to. Thank you. Any board members with questions, anything that you want to know, anything, anything? Go ahead. Fantastic.
Yeah, thank you for having us all.
Thank you for hearing that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Great job.
Thanks. And not only the project, but the ability to come and talk about it is really impressive. So, thank you, thanks to your friends for the help, and your parents, and we are looking for incredible things for you to look forward to. Any other questions from the board before we let them get out their eat? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. 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 All right, we will move on to the general public address of the board. Anybody have anything? This will be a time to come up to the board. Seeing now, moving on to the concept agenda, which includes minutes for the regular board meeting held November twenty-first, minutes of the executive session also held November twenty-first, financial statements dated November two thousand twenty-two, approval of monthly receipts and checks, student activity account receipts and checks, consideration of sponsoring the years of page, your pages, consideration of second support staff recommendations, and also consideration of softball toward night trip request. At this point, looking for a motion to approve the agenda that has been set, agenda as reported.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Rule call, hold. Everybody, please, Courtney.
Gasky?
Yes.
Knackel, yes. Bryan?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Anderson?
On the staff report, starting with school safety drill.
If you take a look at page thirty through thirty-two in your booklet, you'll see the results of our school safety drill that we've gone through multiple times throughout the course of the year, just to make sure that we had an initial staff drill and student drill, to make sure that we knew what the process was getting up and out of the building if we needed to. We are still in the midst of updating our crisis guide. We met with our safety team today, this afternoon, to make updates based on the information that we have for the last two drills, and we're looking to rule that out in January for our bigger safety committee, and then to the entire staff here as we get into the next part of the year. So, we took a look at, and John, I'm going to let you kind of, I'm going to let you add to this, too. We started, you know, with multiple drills at the beginning of the year, one in October and one in December, and we took the information in October, or we need some updates when it came to additional cameras, or door closures, or P. A. system that wasn't working as clear as we wanted to, and then kind of moved it into the December drill, see if we had fixed all of those issues. We had multiple attempts at making sure we could get everybody to where they needed to go during that time. So, we've involved local law enforcement in both drills, and it was great to have them on site for the conversation. So, John, was there anything that you wanted to add in terms of stuff that we've done over the top of that?
We've just been working on the procedure and working on the steps, trying to get all of our schools comfortable, elementary students versus high school students. We went all the way from a lot of the feedback that we heard on the first drill, from added additional P. A. system, where it says intruder in the building or intruder, and then I couldn't figure out how to turn it off, you know? I mean, it worked fine when we tested, and then, and it worked as expected until I couldn't find the button to turn it off. But we got it squared away. Otherwise, the doors, they were closing, the panic buttons weren't, our crisis go app, working on a couple of things there, because we're asking staff to use their phones, and sometimes they turn the notifications off on their phones, so, you know, trying to work out some of those different little things. But I think we've improved greatly. Obviously, we all hope that this never happens, but it's something that will work out generally every day.
Any questions? Any further?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Move on to budget finance, can you report?
All right, so I'm going to introduce Debbie to talk about the budget and finance committee, just in terms of the meeting we met prior to this meeting, to talk about a number of things, from headcount to projections moving forward, and came up with a couple of conversations that will begin once the beginning of the year starts, and it was a good time to have those conversations. So Debbie, I'm going to let you go, but before we get into, actually, do you want to add anything before we started? Bless you. Okay, so Debbie, you're going to go first, and then if we have any additional conversation from the board members that attended the meeting, we'll get into it from there, okay?
Okay. So, good evening. We had our finance committee meeting prior to the board meeting tonight, and it focused on two things. One, very briefly, I just mentioned our audited financials, and the auditors are here tonight to walk through them, so it really was just an F. Y. I. that they would be here with us tonight, and you get to hear from them directly. And then, the second part was focused on our headcount primarily as we look into our future year planning. So, our headcount is important, because it impacts our facility needs, it impacts our curriculum, our staffing, it really is the premise for our instructional decisions, which is different from our resident student count, which is what our state funding is based off of. So, the thoughts around our headcount is just being thoughtful of the new subdivisions that are starting to develop within our district and making sure we have capacity. And as it leads up then to our open enrollment motion that we have next month, where we bring to the board the open seats. And so, the crux of it really is, is we want to be thoughtful, we want to be planning for the potential students that are coming out of these developments, and so, looking at possibly limiting our open enrollment seats at each grade level, so that we don't reach, don't extend our capacity to open enrolled students when we have the potential of our resident students increasing or coming in. Did I explain that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay.
All right, so was there anything from the?
Courtney, your Jill or, yeah, I was going to say, did you have anything to add to that?
There was the awkward pause, I didn't know if that was going to put some slides up or we're waiting on those, so I didn't know if that was part of this.
I can't, I mean, I can, I can share those slides. I prepared different slides for the onboard tonight. Would you like me to share those slides? Or is verbal okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Unless you guys are, are you, are good?
I can work with them.
Good, okay. I'll continue to monitor those, and it is set up for the next conversation that we have in January regarding spots and space available in certain grade levels in particular. So, great conversation there. All right.
Question. We'll see now to the curriculum.
So, I'm going to leave that to Ashley and Anne Marie tonight, but Eric is part of that group as well, so I want to make sure that everybody got a chance to have a next step conversation in terms of our curriculum committee and where they're going. So Ashley, I'll let you take it from there.
All right, so we met in November, and that was Eric and Anne Marie, and then also Chris Jenke, Anne Marie, so we're all so happy. I gave you a lot of papers, do what you want, I'm a visual learner, so that's why they're here, just so you can kind of understand the things we talked about and just the direction we're going in our action plan. So, we opened our meeting by digging into some of the data. We were looking at local data here from our students and our benchmarking we do, we looked into the state report card data across grade levels. We did talk to them about the high school freshman class doing pre-A C. T., freshman teachers had asked for a benchmark to be able to dig down deeper into data and be able to make instructional decisions using that. So it was really exciting, because that was very motivated by our freshman teachers. So that's how we opened the meeting. Any questions at all like that? Okay, so then, we'll go through each of these sheets, so you can kind of have an understanding of what our staff has been up to and where we're going from here throughout the rest of the year. I will say they are still very grateful for that time. We wish we had more, but even having something where students are out of the building for them to connect has been very meaningful to them, so we appreciate that. So the first thing we opened with, with our middle school and high school teachers, because one thing we found from feedback was just an understanding or precision of where we're going, what the big picture is. So we created this little chart for them to see what each part is, and why that part is in the process, and where we ultimately want to go. So, I will go through all of that, but if you do have questions, you can email me or ask, but we just wanted to make sure they had a fair understanding. There's still some things that we need to clean up for understanding, because if you only have one meeting, and then they go off and work, that can be difficult to stay on. So we'll connect with them again also. And then some of you may have been part of this, the curriculum cycle at some point we had, and, you know, with COVID, that kind of fell off, our focus was very different during COVID, and so we're bringing back those phases for each content area to kind of know when a curriculum cycle is coming up and what their steps are. So, I've included the six phases, so you can see what those are, and then where we are in each phase. So right now, since we did adopt a new math curriculum in the elementary, and there is a larger focus with our C. P. M. curriculum at the middle school and even the high school, we had some of the common assessments, and we've been working alongside, all to know with Michelle Parks, that's why everyone is in a phase break. We had to start somewhere, and that just made the most logical sense at that time. So then we're moving in next year to either adopting or seeing what our next step are for English and E. L. A., which are two of our, are highly tested, are highly needed, you know, if we aren't strong in E. L. A., that will impact all their content areas. So, go through the phases, and that goes out for a six-phase cycle. And then this includes all, everyone who's on the curriculum councils and what that looks like. So we started meetings, we met with the E. L. A. and math, those teachers that could be present with us at our last early release, and just seeing where they're at, asking them some questions, getting feedback from them on what direction they're hoping to go in, or what their needs are, or what their worries are even. We learned some things that are coming down that are struggles or just concerns, so it was nice to have that time to connect, so. Questions at all?
Curriculum cycle. On science?
Mm-hmm.
They're in phase six already with science?
Well.
Did I understand you that way?
Well, yes, because we just had to lay out where the phases were.
Okay.
So, just so that we had a cycle, actually.
Okay, so when they go into phase one, that's basically an indication that we're starting a new?
That's actually when they're, again, reviewing and looking at their curriculum, which we're always doing, but they're doing that deep dive, because in phase three, that's where they would actually adopt.
Okay, phase three, right.
Yep. All right. Then, the fun stuff, and this is what we really like to talk with Eric and Anne Marie about, because this is something that holds us accountable as a curriculum team. And so I've included our action plans from last year, and then our current ones. So if you'll see, green means we've completed it, yellow is it's in process, and red is we either haven't started, or it may even be an urgent, we need to get that to green. So there were a couple of things that we did not get to, but we knew we were planning to do that moving on. So then, more importantly, this is what we've accomplished in our first year with having, you know, real curriculum team going, and that support from Eric and Anne Marie, and then this is what we're working on this year. So our goal is to turn things to green, but some things will always stay in yellow, because they should be continually in process, if that makes sense. So it's a lot of hard work, it can feel overwhelming for our staff at time. They're very positive in the belief of needing to work on their curriculum, looking at their standards, aligning with one another, but it's a lot of work, and so that can become overwhelming for anyone, but we've been working hard, so we're excited. We also have our elementaries on a little different phase from the middle school and high school. They are working on professional development with top ten tools, which is helping us understand the science of reading more, and then also because we adopted a new curriculum, having that time if they need it for the math curriculum. Working through and understanding, we just had to adjust our report curve, that was a big change for them, so. Any questions at all?
This is, this is really good information. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Okay. And anytime you have questions about the action plan, it's, like I said, it's an accountability piece for us, too, to make sure that we're staying on track with things, so we have a line in place.
Do you have any questions?
Well, maybe seeing this thing going forward?
I can't, well, we, we'll share again after we meet three times a year, I think it is. So then we'll bring an updated one to the board meeting after that.
So what the plan was, was every time that the curriculum committee meets together, to have another update, and that's part four meeting the following week.
I think we have one in February?
Yep, and then.
So it would be a March.
Yeah.
March sixth, and then June fifth.
So, yeah, so the March meeting, we wanted to have the board members, the team at that meeting, too, so if Chris and Brad were available, they'd be available at that time, too, at the March meeting, so, yeah.
Keep talking.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, move on to administrative reports and board actions, starting with business and finance.
All right, Debbie, this is you.
Yeah. First, on our agenda for business and finance is the school district audit report for last year. So I'll introduce Emily and Kyle, who are here from Whitley, to do an auditor lens as they, as Kyle comes up to prepare. Just some background for you, school districts are required to have an annual audit. Our fiscal year runs from July to June, and so our auditors are coming post fiscal year close, and the financials are due in December, which creates the timeline for board approval and then moving forward. So we always appreciate the extra lens. Whitley has been wonderful to work with, and for us, it's the assurance that we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and a good starting point for the next fiscal year. So having said that, I'll turn that over to Kyle, and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thanks, Debbie. So, I mean, how lucky are you guys to have, honestly, first of all, you know, as always, I've been, I haven't been on this audit a lot. My name's Dan Hoover, been sixteen years at Whitley, an old client that I've worked with, and, 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 so I know I've been out here for something before, I thought a membership out of here, some, but, and, I don't know if Dan mentioned it to you guys or Debbie did, but Dan will be retiring this spring, so I'll probably be taking on a higher level management role in the audit. Emily will be running it, and she has said, I think, the last couple, two or three years. And, you know, as always, we appreciate all of Debbie's help and everybody else in the district office. That really makes a difference when we're doing our audit, if we have people that can help and get us going on, that makes a huge difference. So, you know, the way I usually go about these, and especially with Debbie, you know, I'm not going to go through the numbers in detail, like you may have heard in the past, I'll kind of go through it from an overall audit perspective of the opinions that we issue and new things and things like that. If you have numbers or questions on the numbers themselves, you can certainly ask me, ask Debbie at another time, if you want more detail, and I haven't, I go through it, but I won't waste your time with that tonight. I've done enough of these that I gloss over eyes, so I don't need to go through that. So, as far as financials go, you know, right at the beginning, page one is the opinion on the financial statements. I don't know if you guys probably have them in front of you, because they have electronic audits, but that's the overall opinion on the financial statement, same as it's been for a long time. The report itself looks a little different this year, above the opinion right to the top of the first page, so that you're open to that, and it shows exactly what our opinion was. After the past, we had an unmodified or clean opinion, no issues of note, I don't think even anything that we could either bring up verbally with the board or management, that I think was a, a good clean audit. In that opinion, we did have G. S. B. eighty-seven this year, which was the leases standard, that basically took things that used to be, you know, just a regular monthly payment that would get expensed, and now they've kind of reworked that, so that even if it's for a copier, or, I can't remember what the ones were here, but, I think it was copiers, is that ready, Debbie?
That's correct, yeah.
You know, they want it to be able to show an asset and a liability for whatever contract payments you had left. So it basically just shows up as an offsetting asset and liability, and then principal interest payments over the life of the lease. So it's a little bit like capital assets, a little bit like debt, but in the end, not a great, not a great deal of difference to the bottom line. And like I said, as far as the financial results, I'm not going to go through a lot, but total net position, as the district as a whole, increased two point two million. Five hundred fifty thousand of that was related to W. R. S., it's kind of those imaginary pension numbers that showed up eight years ago, that just don't mean anything to anybody, but they're there, and they make a big difference. And then the rest of that was one point six million dollar reduction in long-term debt, which was all out of the debt service fund. And as far as governmental fund balances, just a little bit different reporting model, they increased four hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred twelve of that was in food service, So they, with, you know, kind of extra COVID money for school lunches, food service had a good year. And 311,000 that increased the long-term capital improvement fund, Fund Forty-Six, which will be great for the district in the long run as well. And then, I don't need to say the tax numbers if nobody's familiar with it, but another, another one of the reports that we have is, it's internal controls over financial reporting report. They call it the yellow book report. Basically, it's kind of laws and regulations, general laws and regulations. If we came across something or law was violated or a general regulation was violated or state statute or something like that, that's where we report that issue. We really had nothing to report in that report. And then page eighty-four is getting the federal state compliance audit. I don't believe you guys probably have the federal one very often outside of one of the COVIDs here. But this year with the, the COVID money, we had to do the federal side, and again, we had no, no compliance findings on the federal or state side. And really, nothing, nothing of note in those programs at all. And, and then we also included the management letter for you guys and kind of looked through that. That's going to look very much like last year's letter. Most of the information in there is contained in the financial statements. And we did have, I think any of the, I think there was maybe control efficiencies for like segregated duties and financial reporting. Those are kind of standard, been there forever and very difficult to figure out before a district of this size. So no changes there. And I think that's all I'm going to talk about unless you guys have questions. Thank you, appreciate it.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
If there are no questions, if they have anything to.
They, they further their desk, you're doing.
No, just want to, to thank Whitley again for their work. I know that they've been like tying up a lot of audits all at once and extremely professional in the interactions with them and very thorough with the questions they ask and the detail that they work through. So we haven't had them come for a few years to present, but I thought this was a good opportunity for them to reconnect and get, you get to hear directly from them.
It'll be a good time with me and Stephanie next year, so.
It is a good time, that's right. Definitely right. Good time with you, Stephanie, next year.
Good introduction. That we didn't, that I didn't know I, we needed.
He didn't tell you that he's retired?
I knew who he was, but I didn't realize it was so soon, so. So welcome. Welcome to Salt Creek. I wish I could have seen you in 3D tonight. Why you, no.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we're melting further. We are asked to, set the report as presented, please.
I'll make that motion.
Roll elbow whenever you are ready, Courtney.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Anderson, Jeski, Jesk, Nicholas.
All right, under consideration of 2023-24 budget development timeline.
This is you, Debbie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
So every year in December, we bring to the board a proposed budget development timeline. And the goal of it is to create a structured system calendar for us to bring the board through our preliminary budget forecasts, contract renewals, all the way up through budget approval, which won't happen until October of twenty-three. So just a reminder that while we just heard from our auditors in formally closing twenty-one, twenty-two, we are living in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and we are already planning for the twenty-three, twenty-four. And so with the approval of the budget timeline, which mirrors the timelines we've had in years past and which ensures we meet all the statutes in terms of teacher contract renewals and such, we use this as our framework in order to get us to the finish line for twenty-three, twenty-four in this case.
Any questions, Courtney? If not, looking for a motion to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four budget timeline as presented, please.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Sorry.
Roll elbow whenever you are ready, please, Courtney.
Ryan?
Yes.
Anderson, Jeski, Jesk, Nicholas, Jesk, Ryan?
Yes.
Right, on to the preliminary twenty-three, twenty-four budget update, please.
Yes. So right away on our board calendar is a first look at our forecast. And so just to remind, well, not a reminder, but maybe an FYI for you. Years ago, we would get our first look at the forecast in January, February. And it has just kind of gotten pushed back more and more as we wanted to make sure we were positioned in our district for the unknowns that are happening in the state. And so I have just a quick presentation for you, and the corresponding output is in the board booklet. So give me just one second. There we go. Okay. So just a couple of reminders. Our fiscal year, I mentioned this just a few minutes ago when we were talking about our audit, that our fiscal year runs July to June. And even though our fiscal year, our next fiscal year, our twenty-three, twenty-four, will start in July, our final state figures aren't received until October. And I know I mentioned this a lot, but I think it's just a really good reminder as to why we continue to work with unknowns and have to run so many what-ifs until then. This year, we're coming into the start of a new biennial budget. So our biennial budgets run on odd years. So the twenty-three, twenty-five biennial budget is coming. And what that means to us is that many of our state numbers, such as an adjustment to our revenue limit per pupil amount or per pupil categorical aid, those are all identified in this biennial budget. Now Governor Evers has released his, oh, Joe, that is purposeful. That slide, sorry. So I'll get to that in a second. Joe was like, you have News eighteen behind you. That's on purpose.
Always got to ask, you know, just always got to ask.
Thank you, though, sorry. So the, I don't know, I lost my train of thought. Oh, so Governor Evers did release his budget proposal this fall, prior to the elections, and that's what is continued to be worked from this month even. What's going to happen between now and when the actual state budget is approved is it's going to go to joint finance, it's going to go through the approval processes. So even though we know what Governor Evers has asked and we know what DPI is asking, we don't know what the final answer will be. And so we're running what-ifs so that we locally can plan for the unknowns that are coming from that state level. And why these state-level numbers are so important is because most of our operational revenue comes from these state formulas. We've seen visuals on this when we approve the budget. But just to remind you, so we have our per pupil notes from the state, and then our local figure that flows into it is our resident student count, which we refer to as FTE. So the visual here, that, that's here. I, I'm so proud that I fit it so well into the slide. It looked like it was a mistake. But I'm always looking for ways to reinforce the message with takeaways. And years ago, I started equating, it's not the same, but if you conceptually budget forecasting to weather forecasts. And ironically, as I turned on the news one morning, this was up on News eighteen, and I was quick enough to get a snippet of it and have used this not only here in our presentation, but other presentations around the state. And really what it is, is it's a reminder that the further you go out, the more things that can change to make it look different. So in a weather forecast, you know, they're saying six to death, six to seven days out, you have multiple outcomes. And the closer you get to the day of, you can see the snow that's falling outside. So the same thing is happening with our budget forecast. We're running what-ifs, we're anticipating those changes, we're, we're running scenarios for different outcomes. And then the closer we get to that year, the more we know what the answer is, is, if it's snowing outside or not. Our goal in amongst all of this is to bring to the board a balanced budget within all of this uncertainty. And so that's why we're running all of these scenarios, so we can make a plan at the administrative team level that we bring to use a board to accomplish that. So I just wanted to, I have just a handful of slides for you tonight, but I want to talk a little bit about the difference between our head count and our FTE, because we, we use a lot of numbers. And without clear terminology, it can be unclear as to what we're referencing. So our head count, that is identified in blue, that's our students who are coming to school each day. So the students we're servicing, actuals through twenty-two, twenty-three, and a current estimate in twenty-three, twenty-four. Our September FTE is our student count. And we reported on this back in October at the board meeting, but just to remind you, these are students as of a snapshot in time on the third Friday in September. And it's, takes our head count, and it transitions by adjusting for open enrollment in and out to our resident student count. So the ultimate goal is to identify the resident students in which we, in Fall Creek School District, are responsible to educate. And then full-time equivalency is when we convert that for our part-time kiddos. So our 4K students, because they only attend part-time, they only count as a part-time, full-time equivalency. And so you can see that there's a sizable difference between head count and FTE. Head count is, as we talked about in our finance committee update, head count is what we're making our instructional decisions based on, staffing, facility, curriculum, technology needs. September FTE, that's what's influencing, it's one of the counts that's influencing our funding. And I just want to bring out an example of how this can impact us and what we're monitoring and adjusting for as early as next year and why you can see a larger deficit next year than we might otherwise bring at this time. So first, we, we just reviewed that full-time equivalency bring, is, is driving our funding, much of our funding at the state. So for example, our revenue limit, which uses a three-year average our September count and forty percent of summer school. So also in our revenue is sparsity aid. And we get it because we have fewer than ten members per square mile. And there are two different levels. So the second level came about in the last biennial budget, before we didn't qualify at all. So the fact that we're getting something is better than nothing. But as we look at twenty-two, twenty-three, so this year, which is based on last year's counts, which sparsity aid counts are different than revenue limit counts. So we have to know nuances, and I've outlined them here. But we this year are in the $400 per pupil tier. We, based on last year's counts, average of September and January plus summer school, seven thirty-two, times $400 per pupil, because we're in that, that lower tier, generated revenue of about 290,000. Based on this year's counts, our September, the January hasn't come yet. It's going to end up being the average of the two, so I'm closely monitoring this. Plus a hundred percent of summer school, if that holds true, we're going to tick over that lower, lower level mark, and we'll only get $100 per FTE, which generates only 75,000 in revenue. So there's two, two parts of this. One is, I want you to know that I'm watching this and have been, if, if the January count comes in, going to do the best I can to possibly adjust the counts in order to get to this level. Two, if not possible, just explaining why we can have a potential growth in resident count and see a decline in funding, which is incongruent with a lot of what we talk about. So long-term, it's always better to have resident students, an increase in FTE. Long-term, everything else staying the same always generates more revenue. But short-term, there might be a few growing pains to get us there. So we are monitoring it, we are planning for it. And the forecast does right now include that loss of revenue from this year to the next. And hopefully, we'll be able to recoup it once we know that January count for sure. So just a few learning points, always looking to put in learning opportunities where we can. So just a reminder that our revenue limit, that main source of revenue for our district and districts across Wisconsin, has two key variables. The first is the maximum revenue per member. This is adjusted via the biennial budget, so we're watching it closely. You can see that it's been steady the last couple, the last four years. It's been virtually no increase. And the last three years, known. Next year, we're forecasting no increase on this. I did put in a slight per pupil. And then the local variable is our current three-year average, and you can see a slight decline in this. And so know that within this, a loss in an FTE doesn't necessarily relate to a lost in expenses, a loss, a, a, the reduction in expenses. There are things that with a loss of five students or, or 10 FTE, can't, doesn't equate to a reduction of a bus stop, for example. And just to show you how important that state biennial budget is, this top visual shows our revenue limit authority, actual again, and 2024 forecasted. You can see that this year, we, we saw a reduction in our revenue limit authority. The state budget did say use your S R funds to adjust. We have used those S R funds, and those S R funds retire after next year. The bottom is Governor Evers' proposal with a per pupil increase of 350 in next year. And so you can see that a $200,000 difference, $250,000 difference between a possible, no increase on the revenue, revenue limit, possible categorical aid, and Governor Evers' proposal, the answer will likely fall somewhere in between. And that's why we're running scenarios in order to plan for it. So that brings us to the output that you see in your booklet, which is this top scenario. And that includes no increase to the per pupil revenue limit. I did put in a per pupil categorical aid increase of $100, which is optimistically conservative, but realistically, I think, as well. The sentiment around the state is although we can't expect the, the 350 or 650 per pupil increase that Governor Evers is asking for, it's reasonable to, to assume 200. I'll bring more scenarios back to the board next month so you can see those impacts. So potential deficit next year, we have some strategies already to address that from a revenue side. And we've been talking as an admin team about options from an expense side as well. And then this bottom scenario, just a real quick glimpse that if Governor Evers' revenue limit portion were to go through, you see a very different revenue result. So we're always looking at these scenarios and trying to create bookends to the possible answers so that we can plan in between. So next steps, we will bring to you more scenarios next month so we can start honing in on this. Not telling you that the forecast that you have in your booklet might change. I'm telling you it will as we get closer and closer and more and more information. We are monitoring the, the state. We're monitoring and modeling the state budget proposals, knowing that what's being, what, what's being asked today will not be final, but trying to get an estimate of what, what is realistic. And then we're always planning to bring you a balanced budget come May, when you do the preliminary approval. And then, of course, into October, when you do final. So are there any questions for me as you look at that first snapshot, or any thoughts or considerations you'd like us to have as we work to bring you more scenarios next month?
No. No, so far.
Thanks, Debbie.
Okay, okay. Did I explain all of that okay?
Yes.
A lot of heads, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, good.
All right. Thanks, Steph.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You're better.
Thank you. This time of year, just don't want to get anyone else sick.
All right, Steph. On to planning, and the WSB policy and resolutions.
So we have Courtney attending this year, and so it would, we usually make the motion to either accept or deny the resolution submitted, those are on page thirty-five to forty-eight, or to give Courtney the discretionary latitude to vote on the amendments on behalf of the board.
Yep, and I think as long as she's gonna be there, that would be perfect. We usually don't have anybody there, so we just accept.
It's in person this year, I'm knowing.
It's in person, as of today.
As of today.
As of today.
Right, that's good. But yeah, it'll be a great conference, they have a lot of really great stuff going on, so.
So at this point, I think we could look for motion to give Courtney the discretionary latitude to vote on the amendments or other resolutions.
Make that motion.
Roll call vote, maybe, please.
Anderson? Gasky?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah. Ryan?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes. Thank you for going to, I appreciate it.
Onto consideration of approval for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So we met with calendar committee and talked about the opportunities going into next year. We did receive the waiver, and wanted to put something out there. We talked with the group about coming up with a couple of different scenarios, and one that would have started the year substantially earlier, Eric, tell me if I'm wrong, just want to be sure I'm on the right page, but like, it would have been probably two weeks earlier if we wanted to get done, A, if we wanted to get the semester done by the December holiday, and if we wanted to get out by Memorial Day, we're talking, we would talk about starting like in mid-August. Yeah, fourteenth or fifteenth, and so that was a, it was, I thought, I felt like the committee felt like that was going to be a hard sell to the group, staff in particular, and with our kids, you know, vacations, everything that families are doing, we also want to make sure that we have time for them as well. So we tried to, we tried to come up with two scenarios, we just couldn't get to, we couldn't get to ending the semester on December, whatever, right before the break, it just couldn't happen. So we tried to get as close as we could in doing that, and provide the opportunity here on page forty-nine just to take a look at. Since we met, there's only been one adjustment to this calendar, and that is the school, the Cluster A group that we are part of, which includes about seven area schools, has decided to move their in-service day for the entire cluster from February to October, and that would be October second. So I talked to some members of the team today, I thought I'd bring it up here as a conversation. The only adjustment would be moving the thirteenth in-service day on the October portion of the calendar to the second, and nobody had an issue with it when I talked to them at this point. So that would be the only adjustment that we would make to the calendar. Last day of school would be the thirtieth of May for kids, and the thirty-first, I'm thirty-first of May for the adults, for the staff. And so it would be through the beginning of June, and we would start essentially the twenty-fourth of August would be the first day for students. Did I miss anything in the conversation? Anything come up that, we tried, like, to just put up different scenarios, it just didn't happen with trying to get the semester done without starting substantially earlier. So we talked about adding minutes to the day, and that would come with a, if we added minutes to the day, which would reduce the number of total days, I think that's a contract negotiation conversation, because not only does that impact our teaching staff, but it impacts all of our staff members. If we go to school less days, then paraprofessionals, cooks, bus drivers are all in that same situation where they would be working less days. So we didn't want to do that at this point, we figured that that was a, that was a negotiated item, which we could talk about, but not at this point in the conversation. Good? Okay, so the proposal would be, the motion would be approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar with changes, and the change would be from in-service day being the thirteenth of October to be the second of October. So we could still participate with the other cluster schools. Participating with the other cluster schools gives our teachers a chance to connect with other teachers in like jobs that they don't often get, if, you know, we're talking about foreign language at the high school, we're talking about, you know, all these single, we call them singletons at the high school that don't get, that don't have partners, right? So we can do that, we can talk about, you know, third-grade teachers connecting with other third-grade teachers, so it is a good thing for our teachers to be able to do, so we wanted to have that as an opportunity. So that would be with changes, moving the thirteenth to the second.
All right, looking for that motion.
I can make that motion.
I have a second.
Roll call, whenever you're ready, please.
Gasky?
Yes.
Michael, yes, Ryan? Wright?
Yes.
Anderson?
Right, consideration of graduation date for twenty-three, twenty-four.
With the approval of the calendar, we would like the motion to approve our graduation for May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, for, at one o'clock for our graduation.
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there graduating before Memorial?
Yeah, it would give us, it would give, it's about at the same time, the gap closes because we're not going to school into January, or into June, I'm sorry, into January, into June, so.
I'll second it. My kid's gonna kill me.
We were there, I was there, I remember, I remember, I remember. That did not go well for me, it was, that was, that was a week, man.
All right, can I pull yes, Ryan?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Anderson, Gasky?
Yes.
All right, onto announcements by administration, please, start with the middle school first trimester update.
All right, John. So middle school, we just, we finished up first trimester, things are going pretty well, obviously we implemented some new things this year with launch and a couple other things, but the kids have been doing a nice job. You know, right now, we're in kind of, you're stuck inside a little bit more, being cold and things like that, so we have different activities, learning's taking place, we didn't have a lot of kids, I think there was maybe four kids that had a failing grade, so our teachers do a real nice job connecting and getting them all squared away, so it's been a good first kickoff to the year, and I'm pretty excited for second and third trimester as well. Any questions?
Nope.
Capstone?
Yep.
So we had three days planned last week, snow day, we took out one of them on Thursday, so we rescheduled that group to present on Wednesday. I often think that I, over a year, I forget how good these presentations are, because I'm like, wow, when I sit in these presentations. I was fortunate to be in a full day and then half another day Mr. Cugel sat in for part of them. There's a couple of things that I took away so far, and January, we had a couple of students come in and share their presentations and just their thoughts on some things, but the impact on these students, I'm gonna tell you a quick story about one of the students, and it was a perception of one of the panel members that was right on. They started out trying to do kind of a presentation like you would in any research class or whatever that you had, and they were kind of struggling a little bit, kind of reading from it, and they just didn't seem very comfortable. And then all of a sudden, they started to talk about their project, and it was changed, completely different presentation, they were excited, they were engaged in what they were talking about, and I'm like, wow, it was like night and day, once they got through the stuff they felt that they had to say. And one of the panel members, just right away says, I was thoroughly impressed that once you got comfortable with what you were doing, it was just night and day difference, and did a fantastic job. And I think that kind of, you know, really wraps everything up really well, we're providing an opportunity for kids to talk about something they're passionate about, to put time and resources and energy into something that they love, or something that they're interested in, and the work that these kids do is absolutely phenomenal. So for a half a credit, to see all this learning, development, the ability to interact with community members and adults in the field, is, it's really, it's really amazing, it's really neat thing to see. I got a chance to bring them in, the kids that presented last week, and then talk to them about how they did on that, and they get feedback from all of the panel members, but obviously some are like, check that off, we're ready to graduate, but the, their reflection afterwards is quite impressive, because I think it's always something that's hanging out there, really not sure what it is, the one or the other, like, you know, I actually learned a lot from doing this, and that's really what you want to see in anything that you do in the curriculum, and we get to see that all the time. I have been thrilled and impressed with the kids, and they, you know, I would, I can't really say that they're better than every year, but it seems like every year they get better, and I think part of it is, it's become kind of a cultural event. So the kids are thinking about it years in advance, I have already three or four juniors that came up and were talking about different, oh, I'm gonna do this for my capstone, stuff like that, which then just feeds the excitement, the passion, and ultimately the learning. So, you know, it's been a great, it's been a great addition to our curriculum, and it's been something that's been great. So if any of you want to sit in on any of those Wednesdays, just let me know, we'll get you in there, we're going from about eight in the morning till about twelve-thirty, and then we are gonna have to reschedule some next, in January too, so I don't want to be available, but by all means, if you'd like to sit in there and see them, and verse them, you're welcome to be there.
I want to.
Fantastic. Wednesday?
This Wednesday? I think it's, oh, this tomorrow?
Tomorrow, today's.
I think that should work, I'll look at my calendar.
So that's good.
Thank you. All right, there are no announcements by the board, at this point, looking for a motion to convene to executive session for chapter nineteen eighty-five, one, see Wisconsin statutes of approximately seven oh two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, whenever you're ready, please, Courtney.
Ryan?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Anderson, Gasky?
Yes.
Michael, yes.
All right, we're in executive session.